Good evening, I'd like to call this board meeting of Independent School District 624 to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Wilson?
Here.
Beloit absent. Chapman?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
Fahy? Here. Mullen?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no religion, justice for all.
Okay, we have, before us, we have an agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. All in favor, is there any discussion? Well, there shouldn't be. So, all in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, we have adopted an agenda. Along with that, we have a consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
The second by Mr. Wilson. This would require a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Alright, we have a consent agenda. Now, it's the time in the board meeting for public forum. I did not indicate, or did I see any cards up here for public forum? Is there anybody that would like to address the board? Okay, we will move on to the first informational item, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. So, we've had terrific conversations at the district's Market Fest booth this summer, and there are more chances to see us in action. Be sure to stop by the district's Market Fest booth from, on Thursdays through July 26th in downtown White Bear Lake to receive a free pencil and a bear paw temporary tattoo. While school is out for the summer, our district is still busy with programs this summer, from extended day childcare to summer school activities, and to activities camps, and everything in between. Thank you to our students, parents, and staff members who keep our buildings hopping year round. The musical Big Fish will be performed at the community auditorium July 27th through August 4th. The production is described as a show for all ages, featuring stories that are larger than life itself. The show is hosted by White Bear Community Players Theater, founded by White Bear Lake Area High School alumni, and supported by the district's Community Services and Recreation Department. Thank you to the sponsors, organizers, and participants, more than 130 golfers, of the recent White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation Golf outing. Had a terrific time visiting and thanking those who were there for all their support for our school district. We recently got word that we received national level awards for six of our district publications. We received awards of excellence for the 2017 Annual Update to the Community, the 2017-18 Activities Calendar, and 10 Facts Local Operating Levy Renewal Mailer, and Award of Merit for the What's in the Name video, and honorable mention accolades for our Bears Bulletin publication and flex afternoon programming for middle school video. Additional information can be found at the district website, www.isd624.org. That's it, Mr. Mullen, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Kasmercheck. Also, I'd like to take, just take a quick moment before we move on to the discussion items and apologize, I should have indicated at the beginning of the meeting, this is our inaugural, I believe the inaugural, Hawaiian Shirt Board Meeting Night, that we are hoping to take this tradition on into the coming years, thinking that July is a great month for the sunshine of Hawaiian shirts, so for those of you out in the listening audience and on the television, welcome. With that, let's move into our first discussion item, the review of the Minnesota State High School League Way We Play Training Video. Dr. Kasmercheck?
Alright, I would, let's see, Jody is going to get it started. Mr. Peliquin, do you want to introduce the video?
Yeah.
Okay.
This way? Don't get short.
Good evening, welcome. Is this on?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you very much for having me. To introduce this video, the Why We Play initiative is something that the State High School League has been working on for many years in looking at the essential question of why we play in high school education-based athletics. The video is a representation of the work that's been done statewide regarding why we play, and in looking at different types of coaching and the way things maybe used to be, and the way maybe you and I were raised by coaches versus what we're trying to do now in looking at education-based athletics. I believe the purpose of the video and having you see it as school boards across the state before you sign off is to make sure that all of the school boards understand what the State High School League is trying to do, what we as activities directors are trying to do, and what we're hoping our coaches are trying to do regarding transformation versus transactional coaches, and looking at, yes, winning is our goal, but it's not our purpose. We're trying to win, but it's not at all costs. There is so much more to our co-curricular activities than just winning and losing, and I think this video is going to do a good job of representing what we're trying to do as a state high school league before you guys sign off on your annual renewal.
Alright.
I think the culture of sport is broken. Success is defined by winning, by having more points on the scoreboard at the end of the day than the other team. That's where the value lies, and whose name is in the paper the next day? And who had the most points? And who had the most rebounds? And who won the game? And who gets to the championship?
It's the reason why we do it.
The Minnesota State High School League's Jody Redman is passionate about developing the human potential of students. She's leading a national movement to reclaim the purpose of sports.
The pressure to win, and sometimes at all costs, is significant. Kids feel it. They feel it from their coaches, they feel it from their parents, they feel it from their friends, they feel the pressure to be able to win.
When we think of how our culture values high school sports today, certain words come to mind, and that of former coach and NFL star, Joe Erman.
Destructive.
Expectations.
Regressive.
Trophies.
Ooh.
Win at all costs.
Lack of value.
Win at all costs.
Lack of value, yes, yes. Missed opportunities?
Zero fun, sir.
Zero fun. Misguided.
Unfortunate.
Unfortunate. Sad.
When we look at education-based athletics and what a trophy means, I think it's about the experience, it's about what did we provide those students that was life-sustaining through trying to get the trophy.
Today's student athletes feel the pressure to compete at a high level, so they drop out of sports. Seventy percent quit by the age of 13, and they miss out on a big educational benefit.
There's a University of Kansas study that draws a correlation between kids who participate and are involved in high school athletic and activity programs. Students that are involved in those activities do much better academically than students who are not. The research shows that the reason for that is school connectedness.
It's been amazing what we've learned.
Five years ago, Mounds View High School began to survey their students, asking what they really get from being involved in the school's athletic and activity programs.
I was shocked to find out that our coaches and advisors are equally as important in the lives of our students as our teachers. It was a game changer for us. Our whole district, where we're going and how we value activities, it's not after-school, it's a part of the educational process. It is no longer an extra. We've defined that, and it's something that we value every bit as much as what they do during the school day.
The purpose of high school athletic programs is not to develop college or professional athletes. In fact, most students, 97%, will not play organized sports after they graduate. Instead, these powerful mentors, we call coaches, have four years to make a difference in kids' lives, to teach them life lessons that will help prepare them to be successful in life.
I will be honest, our goal is to win. Our goal in many sports is to win a state championship.
Winning has a place, and there is value in learning how to win. However, that's not our purpose.
Our purpose is to enjoy that experience, enjoy their teammates, enjoy their coaches, and learn from whatever took place on the field or the court or on the ice on that given day.
Our purpose isn't the score at the end of the game. The purpose is the growth and development that comes through trying to achieve that win.
Three objectives I have, I want them to be a better baseball player, better teammate, and a better person at the end of the year.
We're working with coaches to develop their own purpose statement.
So, why do I coach the way that I do? It comes because I had a couple of coaches in my life that touched me and changed my life.
Joe Erman has been called the most important coach in America, and a leading voice for change in how we coach our kids in sports today.
Why do you coach? Is it about you, or is it about your players?
A transactional coach is basically a coach that uses his platform and position for his own self-edification, for his own identity, his own empowerment, at the expense of the development of their players. It's kind of, if you meet my needs, my demands as a transactional coach, then I'll give you playing time, I'll give you praise, some kind of plaudits, but it's basically using young people.
As a child growing up, I had a lot of transactional coaches when I was younger, because I was a very talented kid. Once I got to high school, my head coach, I didn't have a dad, so my head coach was my dad. It's tough. And he showed me, I'm more than just an athlete.
Transformational coaches basically understand the power, platform, position they have in the lives of young people, and they're going to use that to change the arc of every young person's life, to help them develop morally, ethically, socially, and emotionally. Transformational coaches mentor young people. And to mentor, you have to build a relationship with people. Transactional coaches do nothing but monitor young people. They move them from drill to drill, season to season, no relationship, no contact.
When I first started coaching, I only had one goal, and that was to win at all costs. And I don't use that term lightly, I know how it sounds, and I'm not very happy with who I was as a coach then, now looking back.
To be a better coach, you gotta be a better you.
Now, our focus is much more on what I'll call trying to build a team family within the chemistry of our individual teams that I coach, and trying to find ways for our athletes to grow as people.
Get excited, can't wait, let's go.
Every day, Coach Troy Kors works hard to keep his purpose alive in everything he does, and he's helping his team's student athletes to do the same.
Good, good, good.
Nice. What three words would identify you as an athlete? This is completely you as an individual, and what you want to get out of the sport?
Um, family.
Okay, how come?
Um, because you basically feel like a family, you can like go to them for anything, they'll help you with anything.
The word I chose was friendship. I like going to track practice, hanging out with people I know, and just getting to know them.
I chose responsibility, because I feel like you have to be able to rely on others, and you have to be reliable yourself.
I'm gonna take five, you have six, you have seven. I grabbed three words as well, and mine goes like this. I coach to create positive relationships with my athletes so they know I care about them, while striving to be an authentic leader who they can trust, as we both work together to discover joy in our sport and through competition. That was a good time, 13, 6, 5?
Thank you.
Nicely done, well done, well done.
I'm mostly in track, just to have fun. Just because I'm not the best doesn't mean it's a problem.
The big group's kind of like family to me.
For me, it looks like we're enjoying ourselves more. The idea of sharing in something and enjoying each other's company and being a part of a sport we love to play, and for me, that's been the biggest change I see.
For a coach to withstand the pressure of the current win-at-all-costs sports culture, and to truly be invested in transforming the lives of students, there must be support. Support from school leaders, parents, and the community. For this to happen, we must want more for our kids than just wins, losses, and a good performance.
We want to give them more. We want to give them a significant experience that's going to help them develop into people that are going to live in our community. We want to give them a way of being successful that will sustain them throughout their lifetime, not just until the season's over. So, we have to align school communities around this idea that we are purpose-based, we're education-based.
I want school boards to reclaim sports in the name of education. I think school boards need to make sure that we move away from this win-at-all-costs. We need to start building a system where coaches are held accountable for the transformative impact they have in the lives of their students.
It really boils down to, what do we want to give our children? Beyond the trophy, beyond just the win and the loss, beyond the trophy case.
Hopeful.
Filled with potential.
Men and women of great character.
Yeah. Confusion and mistake-making rocks.
And every child feels loved and belongs.
Connected.
Greater relational capacity.
Wow, you're rocking. What else you got in there?
Let me just say, I've been very fortunate with those two. Jody Redman is one of the directors of the State High School League, and Joe Erman, obviously, is a coach and author of a book. A group of us A.D.s in the metro have been able to meet with them monthly to continue to process this and to continue to work through what the Inside Out initiative is and will continue to be. I'm also very thankful that Tim Herman, my predecessor, implemented many of these things already in our programs, with coaches doing purpose statements, working with their student athletes on why they play, what their purpose is, and really doing a book study and digging into what Inside Out coaching is. And I know that he very much speaks to the support of the school board, and in my short time here, I'm very thankful to have a very specific feeling of support from you guys on what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish versus the win-at-all-costs as what has been done in the past. Do any of you have any questions about that and what we're trying to do?
Any questions? Thank you very much, we really appreciate the video and appreciate the insight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Later in the meeting, we'll approve the State High School League membership form.
Okay.
That'll be in the action items.
Perfect. Discussion item, D2, is the first reading of school board policy. Policy 902, Addendum A, and Policy 730, Use of Electronic Signatures to Conduct Official Business. This is the first reading to come before the board. Typically, this reading is to answer any questions, review anything that's needed to be reviewed, so with that, is there any questions regarding those two policies? If none, then we will bring them back next month for their final reading. With that, we can go into operational items. We'll start with E1, which is Action on the 10-Year Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. Is that Mr. Walt?
Correct, yeah.
Welcome, Mr. Walt.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kasmercheck. In 2015, the state established the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Revenue Program for school districts. The program replaced health and safety, deferred maintenance, and alternative facilities bonding levy programs. Each year, we're required by MDE to submit our plan to the commissioner by July 31st for approval. You'll remember, this winter, we presented a long-term facilities maintenance program timed with when we sold 16.13 million in bonds to support maintenance of our buildings. So, that was necessary at that time because of the bond sale, and so now we'll do our annual approval for the next two years, or next 10 years, excuse me. The projects that were approved for 2018 are all underway, most of those projects are finishing up now, everything's on schedule. Knock on wood, we're feeling good about the summer that we've had. The projects going forward may adjust, we may adjust them for 2020 based on kind of what happens once we start digging deeper into those projects, and we could have unexpected surprises that come along and force us to make some adjustments, so things could be adjusted down the road, but for, and we'll make changes to this policy or to this proposal at that time. So, the recommended action is for the board to approve the 10-years long-term facilities maintenance program.
So, there's a recommended action to approve the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan as presented. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson, is there? Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. Is there any discussion regarding? Mr. Chapman?
Mr. Walt, just if I'm looking at this correctly, comparing the old formula versus this current one, am I seeing something, am I interpreting this right for 2027 and 2028? This is lines 29 and 30, I guess, of this thing. It looks like we actually would get more funding from the state under the new formula than under the old. That would be a pleasant surprise.
I'm not sure, are you saying, will we have an increase in funding and?
Yeah, because lines, let's see, lines 29 and lines 30 show the total old formula revenue on line 29, and it projects it out, and then it's got line 30, the total LTFM revenue for the individual districts projected out, and it looks like 2027, 2028, we actually would come out better under the new formula than the old one, and I was just curious if that is, if I'm interpreting this correctly.
I can take a stab at it, Tim. So, the, so, back when this program was called the Alternative Facilities Program, there were 25 school districts that qualified, we are one of those, so we're grandfathered in, so we have a, we actually have a couple of calculations, we have the old formula and then the new formula as well, and so, whichever one ends up being more advantageous to the district is the one that we use, so that could be part of the difference where there's just a calculation of the two different ways, and that might be what we're seeing here. But ultimately, the revenue did ratchet up for the first few years of the program, so that is an accurate statement that there's a ratcheting up of the revenue.
Those two years, you know, again, if, a lot can happen in terms of the state or somebody playing with the formulas, but it looks to me like we would come out better under the new formula.
Right.
Which I find interesting.
Yep.
Ms. Ellison, did you have a question?
Yes. Mr. Walt, I just have a clarification question. On the very last page of this document, it lists FY '23, '24, '25, '26, and it looks like all of the numbers are the same, or most of the numbers are the same. Is that just, we just project the same numbers and then adjust as we get closer?
Right. So, those are general categories that we know we're going to need to do work in.
Okay.
And as we get closer to them, we'll be really specific on what those projects will be, but at this point, we just know that we're going to need roofs, we're going to need tuck points, we're going to need windows.
So, they're just placeholders for the moment?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the long-term bonds? Long-term facility maintenance plans, excuse me. Ms. Newmaster?
Just one little one, and I did read through a lot of this, and I understood they were placeholders, but is there a placeholder in here anywhere for air conditioning?
Well, it would be under HVAC.
And to add air conditioning, it would be, it's a separate, to add air conditioning is a separate.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I'm thinking about 30 years at north in the inner circle.
Well, this is to replace existing, it wouldn't, and that, and also with HVAC, there's some different requirements, yeah, with HVAC. It's actually dehumidification, so that would be part of the broader facility study that's going on, so any significant investment in air conditioning or dehumidification would be through that process.
I know some things can be like, maintenance would be only if it's there already. So, I guess my question was, what if it's still not there? Is that in the bond that may or may not happen?
That would be, that would be part of the process that's coming up. We would have that, yeah.
The long-term, whatever, future.
Yep, comprehensive facilities.
Wishlist.
Yep.
Wanted to make sure it was out there somewhere.
Any other questions regarding the action? This having financial implications will require a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a plan, thank you. Next on the operation item is E2, Action on the Transportation Contract. Mr. Walt, I'm assuming this is you also?
Yes. So, the district owns a fleet of 39 vehicles, and we provide significant amount of our transportation in-house, and we contract with a variety of vendors to ensure that we have capacity to provide all of our transportation needs. Where the agreements reach the threshold for board approval, we have contracts in place. This year, we need to renew those contracts. We work with Tom Watson from Watson Consulting Group, and Tom's an expert in transportation contracts, contracts that can get pretty complicated, and so he's with us tonight. Invite Tom up, and he'll walk us through where we're at with our transportation contracts. Also with us tonight is Mike Torito, our Transportation Coordinator, and he's available to answer any questions you might have regarding transportation.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, board. Tom Watson, I've been here in the past. Just by way, a quick background, two years ago, we approved, asked you to approve, and you did, four contracts, I'm sorry, three contracts, with first student to do your major piece of work, and then two smaller contractors who handle what we call basically a lot of special services. And those two are Twin City Transportation and Treasure Transportation. These contracts were designed around a two-year contract with options for a third and fourth year. The typical process is, we advertise in the local paper, and we invite a fleet of folks to come on in and take a visit. I had to look back in two years of history, we had four full-service vendors in here two years ago, and we had seven, what we call type-three vendors. These are vendors that operate minivans and some small yellow equipment, typically minivans. I just did one contract not far away from here last spring, and that number went to 21 vendors. And I realized how much time and effort we put into going through and analyzing, and first of all, inviting them in, and then having to analyze all this information that you get from these folks. And the only two things I know is, the number of vendors is increasing, and the price of transportation, contracted transportation is increasing significantly. Maybe one of your, Dr. Kasmercheck's got a better memory than mine, but I think it's probably one of your cost categories, it's probably increased cost faster than some others. So, what I suggested to Dr. Kasmercheck, Mr. Walt, and Mr. Torito was that we extend these contracts for one more year with an option for year four, with the idea that we begin to invite qualified candidates to come and meet with us and discuss terms we offer them. In other words, we reverse the roles, because typically what happens is, we get them in here, for example, and I was just looking back this morning, just to give you an idea, we had two of those big full-service vendors last year, or two years ago, that came in with 25% increases. You can figure out how fast and anxious we were to sign contracts for 25% increases. So, you spend your time trying to beat them down, and I said to myself, you know, at my age, I'd be smarter than that. Why don't we reverse the role? And we'll tell them what we're willing to pay, and we'll invite qualified vendors, obviously, and we'll negotiate from our position rather than from theirs. And the exchange of that was kind of interesting, which is why this proposal's in front of you. Sorry to give you this whole story, but your contract right now was a two-year with a two-year option, and the idea typically was, we would just extend for two more years, and somewhere in the spring/winter of 2019 or '20, winter of '20, February, January, February '20, we would invite all these folks to come in. And so, I said to these folks, what happens if... And so, I said to these folks, what happens if we were to extend this in the manner that's in front of you, with the idea that we start talking to you this winter, which means there's a year remaining on those contracts? So, the action is, if we get vendors that like what we're doing, they effectively have one more year on a new, on existing contract, and they would have a new term contract starting after that. Gives them some length, gives them more collateral for bank lending, whatever else they may need to do with it. Second is, if we don't, aren't successful, we still have a contract for another year. Most of these folks are anxious to come in and negotiate nowadays. They're not interested in being in this pool of 25 people competing for your love, okay? And so, First Student thought this was a great idea. So, the item in front of you is the same contracts, it's all the same terms that were approved two years ago. The difference is, the term is one year, year three, with an option for year four. Don't be surprised, we're back here within the year discussing some negotiated contracts for, starting in what would be school year 2021.
We have a recommended action to move to approve the extended contracts with First Student, Twin Cities Transportation, and Trezor Transportation to provide student transportation services commencing August 1st, 2018, and ending July 31st, 2019, with an option to extend the contracts for an additional year, consistent with the Minnesota Statute 2017, Section 123B. dot 52. Is there a motion to approve that action?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion regarding the action? Mr. Wilson?
One question, one comment. I rather like the concept of, you know, bargaining from our position. My question is, do we have the data to offer a realistic picture of what we want to offer to pay the various busing companies, you know, gas pricing, inflation, all of that sort of stuff? I'll just ask that.
I'm going to, I'm going to answer that question two ways. Mr. Torito, Mr. Wald, who I've just begun to work with, Mr. Kasmercheck, I've worked with in other districts, our answer collectively would be, of course, we do have that information. Will the vendors agree with us? That's the subject of negotiation. Most of our contracts, we have clauses that take care of things like fuel price, major fuel price changes, any kind of federal or state regulations, laws, emissions requirements that have occurred on busing over the years. The latest is now there's a push to put propane, more propane buses, fuel buses out there. So, there's a number of things that come to the play. I think in most cases, the biggest issue that we've got today, and I think Mike can tell you that, is the labor market. And it doesn't really make any difference who the paymaster is, whether it's the district or a contractor, these are the same people that need to be paid those same market wages to do comparable piece of work. It really doesn't make any difference who, who you are employed by to do that. And so, that's the difficult part.
Well, that was the gist of my question, so, yeah. And that's a good answer, so, thank you. The comment I made, or will make, is, I don't know who put it in, but I particularly like the illustrations of the different bus types. And it's one thing to have the chart with all the ownership of the different, you know, type-C, type-D, class-three busing and all of that, but when you put the pictures along with that, so you can really see what they look like and what the descriptions are, that was very helpful, and I really do appreciate that.
Ms. Newmaster?
Just one question, as you, we were talking about the next year including Twin City and Trezor, and I noticed this year we had Ray-Ban and Halo. Does that mean we're not using them?
No, we, you have used them in the past. We have a little, little issue that we have to take care of with respect to Ray-Ban in particular. State law does require us to have contracts with anybody that we provide, who, who provide services where compensation exceeds $100,000. And with them, we've typically not done that, because we really didn't know how much work we were going to expect and require of them. Now that we know that has exceeded that number, we need to negotiate that. Whether it's going to be Ray-Ban or a different provider that's housed up in this area, we're having some conversation with a couple of them to do that. They're basically covering your overload, is what's the problem. So, if you have a district employee, for example, a vacancy that's created, things of that sort, these folks are, are willing to step in. On the Halo side, what Mike can tell you with Halo, Halo's really a pretty specialized special ed provider. So, they're dealing with children who have various behavior issues, things like that, they require some special care, along the way, they require some special equipment, and Halo typically does that. And I don't know that you're necessarily at $100,000 with them, but because of the litigious nature of the world we seem to be in, I'm an advocate very strongly of having contracts for all of these services.
Well, that's why I wondered. I knew Halo was specialized, and I was wondering if we're going to continue offering that option.
It, it may be Halo, and it may be another. I mean, that's an area that's growing for you. But I want to see the insurance, and I want to make sure drivers are qualified and equipment is inspected, and nowadays, we're dealing with all of the molestation coverage with liability policies that we want to make sure is in place and all those sort of things. So, there's, it's a more serious matter than it's ever been.
I do understand that. And since these specific names weren't mentioned, I just wondered if we were only going down to two providers?
What we've talked to Dr. Kasmercheck, Mr. Wald about is the fact that you're probably going to see those contracts at your August board meeting.
Any other questions regarding the contracts? With this having financial implications, we will have a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
You have contracts. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. With that, we'll move on to operational item E3, which is the action to designate and identify official with authority for the MDE External User Access Recertification System. Dr. Kasmercheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. This is an annual approval item. It just authorizes the superintendent to, to comply with the State Access Control Security Standard 1.0. So, basically, we're renewing and recertifying people who have access to enter data and access data from the Department of Education website. That's what this is. It's an annual approval item.
Okay. We have a recommended action to move approval of Wayne Kasmercheck Superintendent and Jody Rebar, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, to add and remove names only, as White Bear Lake Area Schools identified official with authority to, as required by the Minnesota Department of Education. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. You know what, let's have, is there any discussion regarding this? None? I think we should just do a roll call, just to be safe.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
All right, we have, that's handled. We'll move on to operational item E4, action on the 2018-2019 Resolution for Membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Dr. Kasmercheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. Again, another annual approval item. We see this each year at this, at the July board meeting. Mr. Pelican was here earlier to show the video, that the State High School League is requested that all school boards see, and then subsequent to that, this is the, this is the membership form that you're asked to approve each year.
Okay, we have a recommended action, recommendation to approve membership in the Minnesota High School League for 2018-2019. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, the second by Mr. Wilson?
Sounds good.
All right. Is there any discussion regarding this item? You know what, there's financial implications, so let's have a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Okay, well, our membership is renewed. Next, we have an action on updating official depositories for the school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures. Dr. Kaz, Mr. Wald, or Dr. Kasmercheck?
Aye. This is an, this is an annual approval item, as well as, as staff change and we have turnover, we, we update our, our authorized signers. Mr. Wald, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, just, this, it's, this is a twice-a-year approval that the board votes on, and approves the, where we have our money deposited, and who has the access to sign for that, so. Presented in the board packet tonight, we're just asking the board to approve that list.
Okay. The list is in the board packet, is there, we have a recommended action to approve the list attached in the, approve the official depositaries for the school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Is there any discussion regarding the, the list?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have another clarification question. The middle school petty cash accounts have just the principals listed, and then the high school petty cash accounts also have Dr. Kasmercheck listed. And then, I guess I'm curious, so that's question one. And question two is, I'm curious about the multiple cafeteria accounts, and why one of them has yourself and Tom and Dr., and Dr. Kasmercheck, and the other has board members? Why, why two accounts have all, just board members listed and not anybody from the administration? I'm just, I'm just trying to learn, so.
Dr. Kay, can you answer that?
Yeah, so you're looking at, for example, you're looking at US Bank and Bremmer with the cafeteria account?
Yeah, and that these two both have just board members listed, and not, nobody from the administration, and that these two, the middle schools, don't have you listed for petty cash, but the high schools do.
Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and approve, my recommendation would be that we approve these tonight, and then we'll talk to Tom Azorik and get you an answer, and then if we need to make some modifications, we'll bring that back. We'll, we'll clarify the question about the two cafeteria accounts from US Bank and Bremmer, as to the difference. One may be a larger account, one may be a sub-account. We'll, we'll get, we'll get the specifics on that, and then we'll clarify the petty cash fund at the middle schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion regarding the list that's attached to the packet? With that, this will require a roll call.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Okay, we'll get the information back. Next, is E6, which is the action on approving non-affiliated contracts for 2018 and 2019. Dr. Kasmercheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. So, this is, again, well, by annual approval item. We have many employees who are not associated with a bargaining unit, and so we establish the, the pay increase and insurance increases, consistent with what we've discussed with other groups in closed session, and so the, the proposal here is a 2% salary increase, which is consistent with other groups, and then a 5% increase year one, 2.5% year two on the, on the health insurance, and then essentially the other provisions of the, of those individual contracts remain the same. So, that's what you're acting on tonight. Again, this is a approval item that occurs every other, on an every other year basis for these particular employees.
So, we've got a recommendation to approve the proposed salaries and/or salary rates and benefits for the district's non-affiliated employees. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second? Ms. Newmaster? Ms. Newmaster is second. Is there any discussion regarding the action? With that, this will require a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Okay, those agreements are approved. Action on E7, which is action on the school board liaison assignments, school board liaison assignments for 2018, 2019, and 2019 and 2020. This is the, typically, we move throughout every two years, and this will add on to those. Dr. Kasmercheck, do you have anything to add on those?
I don't, no.
These are the schools liaison assignments. Is there a motion to accept the, those assignments?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there, I'll second. This, is there any discussion regarding them? Okay, I, all in favor of accepting the assignments, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, we have assignments. Next, we'll go to E8, which is action on the school board committee assignments for 2018, 2019. Same thing, they're in the packet as presented. Is there a motion, there's a recommended action to, the board chair and superintendent are recommending the attached committee assignments for July 2018 and June 2020 to be approved. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Is there any discussion regarding those assignments? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, we've got, got those assignments also handled. Next, E9 is the action on the annual resolution authorizing administration to contract for budget, budget items. Mr. Wald, is this you?
Yep. In accordance with Minnesota Statute 123B.52, the superintendent or business manager has the authority to lease, purchase, and contract for goods and services within the budget as approved by the board. Any transaction greater than $100,000 must specifically be authorized by the board. In the future, we'll renew this authority in our January organizational meeting. So, the recommendation is for the board to move to authorize a superintendent and assistant superintendent for finance and operations the authority to lease, purchase, and contract for goods and services within the budget as it is approved by the board in the amounts of up to $100,000.
This is consistent with our practice, and it codifies our, our practice, and this is a question from an earlier board meeting that Kim raised, and so we thought we should, we should put this in, so there's no, there's no question about that on a going-forward basis. And so then, at the January organizational meeting, this will be a standing item that gets approved every year. So then, as board, as boards change over, there'll be clear understanding of the contracting authority, so.
You've heard the motion, is there a, is there a motion to approve the recommended action?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Seeing none, let's have a roll call with this, please.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Okay. And last, last operational item, E10, which is action on school board policies, coming back for their second reading, so I will, think we'll do them in one fell swoop. There was a, we had discussion on the last one, so I'll read all the policies, and then we'll ask for a motion regarding them. So, Policy 404, employee background checks, Policy 404 dot one, the form, Policy 420, student and employees with communications of infectious diseases, Policy 420, procedure of the Policy 420, Policy 507, corporal punishment, Policy 513, student promotions, retention, Policy 703, annual audit, Policy 706, accepting of gifts, Policy 905, advertising. Is there a motion to adopt all those policies?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman. I will second that motion. Any discussion regarding any of those policies? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the policies, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, all those policies are adopted. With that, we are at this point where we're ready for board forum, this time for the school board to talk about anything that's coming up, anything that they've, would like to share with the community. Is there anything under board forum?